All righty.
Well, good morning, everyone. It's wonderful to have all this energy in the room. Thank you, everyone, for being here and welcome, welcome. Clerk Moss, could you do us the honors, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county services. This is now meeting this regular session, May 21st, 2024. Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Commissioner Willey?
Here.
Vice Chair Fai?
Present.
Chair Harrington?
Here. Okay. We have an action-packed day, what can I say? The next item on our agenda is public communication. This is an opportunity for anyone here in our in-person audience or on our electronic audience, care of Zoom, to address the Board of Commissioners for up to two minutes an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
I did not see anyone sign up in the back room. Would anyone that came in the auditorium wish by public comment on any counter-reliant item for up to two minutes? Raise your hand, start coming forward. Not seeing the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish by public comment for up to two minutes on any counter-reliant topic? Give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands. Chair Harrington.
All righty. Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we have our consent agenda. Today's consent agenda consists of one set of minutes, one item from Clean Water Services, two items from Health and Human Services, two items from Facilities, Fleet, and Parks, one item from Human Resources, and four items from Land Use and Transportation. Bringing us to 11 items for today. What are the wishes of the Commission? Second. All those in favor of adopting today's consent agenda, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we have the opportunity, whoops, I need to flip my page, to appoint members to the Washington County Audit Committee. Today, we have the opportunity to appoint the following community members to said Washington County Audit Committee. Andrew Carlstrom, Sadish Upadey, Peter Parmenter, excuse me, I did that wrong again, Peter Parmenter, and Prashanth Arukasan Karan, to fill the four currently vacant positions, as well as Janice Richards, to fill a position that will become vacant on July 1st of 2024. Oh, hello there, Mr. Munn. I'm sorry.
And Chair, Mr. Munn is here just if needed. Your Board has previously discussed these appointments in a work session.
Yes, we have. Does anyone have any questions of Mr. Munn?
Just for clarification, Chair, I may have not heard you correctly, but the people we are recommending for appointment are the four, not Janice Richards?
No, there's four. The four currently vacant positions and Janice Richards to fill the position that will become vacant on July 1st, 2024.
Oh, sorry. I did nothing there. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Do we have a motion to appoint said members?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we're moving on to proclamations. We have the opportunity to proclaim May 19th through the 25th of 2024 as National Emergency Medical Services Week here in Washington County. So we have some of our great staff as well as a guest. Welcome.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington, Board of County Commissioners. It's great to be here today. My name is Mira Semantel. I use she/her pronouns. I'm the Director of Health and Human Services. And as the Chair said, we are here today to proclaim this week as Emergency Medical Services Week. We're really excited to have Adrian Donner with us today, as well as Tim Case from our Public Health Emergency Preparedness Program. And we're very honored to have, sitting next to me, Chief Jim Gearing from the Forest Grove Fire and Rescue. And he will be reading today's proclamation. I will go ahead and turn it over to Adrian.
Good morning. Okay, let's see if I can make this thing work. Okay, so today, we'll go through a quick presentation. Really, what we wanted to do is speak very briefly to each point on the proclamation, read the proclamation, and then, of course, request that you support the proclaiming this week as National EMS Week. I want to first just thank all the people who make up our EMS system. We have a fantastic alliance that brings together all the stakeholders in the county who make up the system. We have EMTs and paramedics in the audience today, and of course, in the field every day, who do an excellent job serving the people who are in Washington County who have an And they all work very hard.
And that's all of these folks in the audience, you will get to everything. I'm going to lie, stop the TV.
Thank you for the warning. The folks in the EMS system are always ready, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They're out there, they're responding to calls, they're helping people, they're providing excellent service. Our EMTs and paramedics on the street have a high level of not only training to become an EMT or a paramedic, but also ongoing training within their organizations and regionally as well. And I will quickly pass it off to Tim.
So, in the EMS system, we really want to focus on the quality of care, because it's the quality that really makes the difference. And kind of zeroing in on cardiac arrest, we've been looking at measures that have shown to make the most improvement for your chances of survival. And those are things like the amount of compressions per minute that you're giving somebody, the rate at which you're compressing, reducing the number of pauses, so there's not a lot of gaps, so it's a lot of continuous CPR. We're looking at those things and trying to identify opportunities for improvement. And part of that is we submit data to a national registry where we can really see how our performance is locally compared to the state and nationally. But really, one thing that I wanted to mention is that the cardiac arrest network, or the out-of-hospital cardiac arrest net is pretty wide. It's not only made up of our telecommunicators at WACA, but also law enforcement who arrive and provide CPR and AEDs, fire first response and EMS, but also public access to fibrillator programs, so publicly available AEDs, along with trained citizens that can provide hands-on CPR as quick as possible. So again, getting back to the data submission to CARES, the Cardiac Arrest Registry to Enhance Survival, we love acronyms in EMS, just forewarned. Really, we are almost double the national rate for survival neurologically intact. That means you're kind of going back to life as you knew it before your cardiac arrest. And that's pretty remarkable. So to augment that system, you know, EMS has had really a pretty significant growth in the breadth and depth of things that we do. Here are a couple of examples. TVFNR, Tuolumne Valley Fire and Rescue implemented an innovative program where they have paramedics that have training above what they would come out of school with, and they can provide things like mobile integrated health and community paramedicine. It's kind of in-home care for folks that are not in an acute emergency but do need help, you know, coordinating medications, getting into doctor's appointments, really kind of tying together that continuation of care and that continuum of care. And there's a lot of other things that, even from when I started in EMS, that we do now. And there's systems that use whole blood for trauma patients, using point-of-care ultrasound to, you know, tell if somebody's heart is still beating in cardiac arrest or not, and looking at electrocardiograms to diagnose heart attacks. So really, when you think of the Venn diagram of public health, public safety, and healthcare, EMS sits for the confluence of all three. Next. Oops, too fast. As Adrian mentioned, there is a lot of specialized initial training and then ongoing training to maintain competency. Here in Washington County, we have at least an annual multi-agency training, which we call MAT, M-A-T, and that's where all agencies, Tuolumne Valley, Hillsborough, AMR, Metro West, everybody comes together over a course of days, and we train on various topics that we either don't see very often, like childbirth, or some other pediatric trauma emergencies, and critical airway management skills, cardiac arrest, other things that our physicians feel is important for us to train on. And we do that together, because we take that training and that safe space, and it applies immediately to the field. Additionally, we provide a West End MAT, and by that, agencies like banks, to a certain extent, Forest Grove and Gaston, because of their large volunteer makeup, they don't have the ability to send folks on duty to that MAT training, so we take it to them. So everybody in the county has access to that same training, that same skill set. Then train members of the public. As Adrian mentioned, you know, this, it really kind of points back to the CPR that's provided in the field, either from the citizens that have taken a CPR course, law enforcement, our telecommunicators that are teaching somebody CPR in the moment as it's happening, to provide really good survival rates. But it's also worth mentioning that, you know, cardiac arrest gets a lot of attention, which it should, but EMS does, as I kind of alluded to, a lot more things. We respond to diabetic issues, breathing, chest pain, obstetrical and gynecological emergencies. It kind of runs the gamut. So really, EMS provides that in-hospital care at the curb side, at the couch side, in your living room. And the time, effort, and training to develop the knowledge, skills, and ability at any certification or licensure level is daunting. But we do it. And we do it because personally, I couldn't imagine doing anything else, and I think everybody else would probably agree and say the same thing.
Can I ask a question on that slide before you move ahead? With Washington County's rate at 75%, almost double, I mean, it's good that we have people who are trained in this, but do we know why that is?
I don't know if we can pinpoint one specific thing, but really, I would say it's our dedication to the training, our dedication to the science of cardiac arrest resuscitation. The emergency physicians that are our medical directors really are deeply involved in cardiac arrest research and education, and we really spend a lot of time looking at ways to improve how quickly we get on the chest to do compressions, ways to minimize the pauses, techniques, whether it's mechanical CPR or manual CPR, how that best plays out. And we kind of follow the science and really just reel on it and just fine-tune.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Are you asking why is it that here in Washington County bystanders are?
Yeah, the bystanders are actively engaged in this, and it seems like very well-trained. So yeah, that's just an interesting thing. Maybe it's, maybe we care more in Washington County, I don't know, but.
It helps, too, that, and I can say our predecessors, it wasn't us, did quite as significant work getting AEDs into the community. Washington County itself has way more AEDs than legally we need to have for big public buildings, so that the buy-in to having those accessible has also been significant in the county, as well as ongoing training for community members who want to know how to do CPR.
Thank you. Well, I need a refresher, so the next time you have a training, would you please let us know, so I could attend that?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I think we have some openings this summer. Okay, the last thing on this slide, not to diminish all the really good examples that Tim gave on all the other things we do, but the first week in June is also the National CPR Week, so do go out and get trained and become one of the people helping our numbers. Be fantastic. Okay, with that, and for all the reasons we've said in the slides prior, I just want to say it's very appropriate to recognize and value all the EMS partners and practitioners across, well, across the nation, but in Washington County specifically. And with that, I will introduce Chief Gearing to read the proclamation.
Thank you. Thank you. Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. On behalf of all the EMS workers here today and all of our EMS workers in the county, we thank you for recognizing EMS Week this week, and I thank you for allowing me to be here to read the proclamation into the record. Whereas, emergency medical services is a vital public service, and whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas, emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine, and whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, emergency nurses and physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers, and whereas, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating the Emergency Medical Services Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this 21st day of May 2024, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, acting as the local public health authority, does hereby proclaim the week of May 19th to the 25th, 2024, as Emergency Medical Services Week. The 50th anniversary of EMS Week theme is honoring our past, forging our future, and we encourage the community to observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you, Chief. So Commissioners, before we do anything else, how about a motion to adopt said proclamation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor of proclaiming National Emergency Medical Services Week, May 19th through 25th, 2024, here in Washington County, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And we would invite everyone to join us in a picture-taking opportunity, but also, Chief, while you're sitting there in front of the mic, I noticed on your left sleeve that in addition to your chief stripes, there are these florets. Could you explain what those are, please?
Oh, I'd be happy to. Thank you. Yes, the, these are Maltese cross, and they're a symbol in the fire service. Each one represents five years of service.
Wow. How many are there?
There are seven.
An impressive amount.
There are seven. I just completed 38 years, so, yeah. Thank you for recognizing that.
That's wonderful. Well, please, especially to our audience members who are part of our emergency management
Can we get some more folks over there? We're not totally centered.
Here we go. And onward to another topic. Our EMS folks show up a lot to service our community, including those members of our community that are having the most difficulty securing stable housing. So our next topic is a quarterly update to our Affordable Housing Bond and Supportive Housing Services efforts here in Washington County. So I would like to invite our really amazing subject matter experts up to share with us this terrific information. They work really hard helping the community advance, and it's the greater community, working with our city partners, working with community-based organizations, and doing so in a welcoming and caring manner. So please, we'll start it off with you, Ms. Rogers.
Thank you so much, Chair Harrington. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Molly Rogers. I use she/her pronouns, and I serve as your Director of the Department of Housing Services and the Housing Authority of Washington County. I'm eager to be with you to share some important updates on both sides of our House, if you will, the Affordable Housing Bond, and our Supportive Housing Services programming. But first, I would love to introduce to you our newest member of our executive team, Jill Chen. Jill joined us almost three months ago and has already hit the ground running, has not stopped. She serves as our Assistant Director for the Housing Authority of Washington County. Just a little bit about Jill. Jill and I worked together for about five years at the Portland Housing Bureau, implementing close to half a billion resources from the Portland Housing Bond and the Metro Housing Bond, which led to over 4,000 new affordable housing homes across about 40 projects. Jill also served after a nationwide recruitment, very competitive selection process. As the, prior to her time at the City of Portland, she worked in international development with the Grameen Foundation, the Bank of America, AVN Amro Bank, and the World Bank Group. Chen earned her Master's of Arts from Duke University and a Master's of Business Administration from the Wharton School at the University of Pennsylvania. So as the manager of the production team, she led really the largest production ever seen at the Portland Housing Bureau, and we're thrilled to be able to have her skills and lead this team here in Washington County. Today, I am joined by staff on both sides of the Homeless Housing, Homeless Services Division and our development team to get into the details of our work that we have accomplished in the third quarter of our fiscal year from January to March. Before turning it over, I would be remiss in not elevating three major developments we have accomplished this past quarter. The first is the opening of the Opal Apartments, which is really a gorgeous complex in Cedar Mills on the land of the Christ Humanited Methodist Church. And here you see Commissioner Treese sharing some inspirational words at the groundbreaking celebration just a few weeks ago. Second, this board just recently approved the funding for two new access centers, one in Tigard, the other in Hillsborough, which will be places where people experiencing homelessness can go during the day to receive services as we build out our homeless system of care. And last, and certainly not least, in the spirit of continuous improvement, we have worked tirelessly over the last year to expedite our contracting and payment processing so that our community-based organizations don't have to go very long without getting paid and a more, and be paid in a more timely basis. And this is a really big deal, because we want to make sure that we support all the organizations as they support their staff delivering on really important services. We are able to now, able to get out our contract templates way in advance of our fiscal year start, to give them time to review and approve, and to make sure that they don't be able to skip a beat in their, in their staffing and delivery. And I would like to personally thank Ally Alexander Sheridan and her fabulous team in leading these efforts. And with that, I'd like to turn over the next few slides. Do you want me to pass it over?
Thank you, Molly. Good morning.
Ally, could I just give you a shout-out before you present all the great content? As many, well, as my colleagues know, I serve on the Metro Supportive Housing Services Oversight Committee, but also the Metro SHS Tri-County Planning Body. And Ally has represented the Washington County Program multiple times in those meetings, and it's always impressive to hear her in action, really helping ensure that the members of that committee know how our staff, not only at Washington County, but also our other two county partners, are working together on this regional approach. And you just do a stellar job, and I wanted to make sure we all had the opportunity to know of that. So thank you, Ally.
Thank you. I appreciate your kind words. Well, with that, good morning, Chair and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ally Alexander Sheridan. I'm your Business Operations Manager with the Homeless Services Division. And I am going to kick us off with an update on our Quarter Three outcomes for our Supportive Housing Services funded work, and we'll also touch on the work that's happening through the end of the fiscal year and looking ahead to the next fiscal year. So a couple of updates. Molly touched on our access development work that is underway. So we are planning to award two access center sites, as she touched on. Our overall anticipated allocation of funds is up to $20 million, and our goal is to allocate these funds across four geographically distributed access centers in the county. We're looking to make those awards officially later this summer, and then the next fiscal year, we'll look to allocate funds for two additional sites to round us out. We also wrapped up our performance evaluation of all of our Supportive Housing Services-funded organizations in Quarter Three. We launched this performance evaluation work last fiscal year, but one of the changes we made this year was that high-performing organizations in their performance evaluation were awarded multi-year contracts. So we had five community-based organizations that were awarded multi-year contracts, so they're currently funded to provide services, or will be once their contracts are in effect on July 1st, through the '26-'27 fiscal year. Another program achievement I'd like to highlight is our Housing Careers Program. So this program is in its second year of its pilot demonstration, and in this year-to-date, the program has served 42 individuals with lived experience of homelessness or housing insecurity. And again, just as a reminder of this program, this program provide, is fundamentally a workforce development program, so it provides training and paid internships to individuals with lived experience of homelessness, who are generally underrepresented in our workforce of serving folks in our community-based organizations. in our community-based organizations. And then lastly, I'll just touch on, we've launched the Performance Evaluation Technical Subcommittee. So we've brought you updates on our Solutions Council, our newly-formed Singular Advisory Body. And in Quarter Three, we launched the Performance Evaluation, or Technical Subcommittee. This committee will oversee the rating and ranking, which is a fundamental process as part of our continuum of care work. And they'll also inform our strategy for our continuous improvement of our performance evaluation work across our homeless services system. So a little bit on our funding. So you'll see in this graph, there's a light column on the left side of this graph. And that includes our target spending that we anticipated quarter-over-quarter at the beginning of the fiscal year when we built our budget. And then the darker green column is what we've actually spent. So it represents our fiscal actuals for the quarters. So you'll see that we've actually been outpacing our target spending. We initially set a goal at the beginning of the fiscal year that we would spend 85% of our Supportive Housing Services budget. You'll also remember that our original budget was $86 million, but we brought a budget amendment to you all earlier this fiscal year to add just under $10 million to our budget in anticipation of the spending that we thought we would do through the end of the fiscal year. So our updated budget amount is actually $96 million with a new target of spending a total of $81 million through the end of the fiscal year. We anticipate that we'll spend the remaining 25% of our target budget in the fourth quarter. And as you see here, based on the trends that we're seeing, we anticipate that we will fully expend that remaining 25% of our budget in the final quarter. And with that, I think I'm handing it over to Catherine.
Thank you, Ally. Good morning, Chair and Board of County Commissioners. For the record, my name is Catherine Gallion. I use she/her pronouns, and I'm the Program Implementation Manager in the Department of Housing Services, here to share our progress towards our annual goals across all of our program components. In Quarter Three, we met our shelter bed creation goal with the opening of the Aloha Pod Village. So we are, we are complete there. We are also far exceeding our eviction prevention goals. So this is work we lead in partnership with the Office of Community Development. Services are provided by both Community Action and Central Cultural, and they work closely with Eviction Court to make sure that we're helping as many folks as possible retain their housing and stay out of the homeless services system. Both of those organizations also work closely with other culturally-specific organizations and our Housing Liaison Programs to make sure that those resources are as accessible as possible to those who are most vulnerable for experiencing homelessness if they experience an eviction. For our housing placement goals, for both our long-term and short-term housing placement goals, we continue to lag behind our targets. And we're working very closely with our providers to catch up. We've made some significant progress already in the fourth quarter, and we're continuing to push through, specifically working with our providers to make sure we're removing all of the barriers that are systemic or process barriers to creating those housing placements. We've created individual targets for each of our providers collectively across the network of 20 providers. The lift is much smaller when you break it down into smaller chunks. And we're also working really closely to improve tracking and reporting so that we can create that accountability and really leaning into our by-name list processes and working with each individual organization to identify the barriers and challenges that their participants are running into. And I just wanted to end with an update on our friend Russell here, who you may recognize from many previous presentations. Russell is a really, one of the people who, on the chart, that was housed in the third quarter. Russell has been with our system for quite a while and is an example of how people move through our system. We encountered him. He was in one of the encampments, was engaging with street outreach, moved into one of our shelter programs. And after a small number of failed housing placements, after which Russell did not give up and his case managers did not give up, he is now housed. Very excited to share that specific story with this group. With that, I'll hand it back to Ally.
Thanks, Catherine. I will close us out with an overview of some of the work that's getting underway in our final quarter of the fiscal year and some work that will get underway as we head into the new fiscal year. So we will continue to focus on sustaining and strengthening the system of homeless and housing services that we have built. Specifically, Catherine's team has been leading up the build-out of a move-in-ready fund and program intervention. And so the goal of this program is to serve households that are at risk of experiencing homelessness or experiencing homelessness, I should say, who really just need a one-time infusion of funds to pay for move-in costs to stabilize in housing. We're also looking to roll out a housing graduation program. So this would include individuals who are currently housed in permanent supportive housing, but really have stabilized to the point of no longer needing intensive supportive services or case management services. However, have not, many of them have not yet increased their income to sustainably afford their rent. So we'll need ongoing rental assistance, but more limited supportive services. We're also looking to release a capital offering for investments in transitional housing, so the acquisition rehabilitation of sites for transitional housing. So we'll be bringing you all an update in the new fiscal year on that front as well. Molly mentioned that we've released our draft contracts to our partners for review earlier this month. So that's 24 of our community-based organizations that will be providing Supportive Housing Services-funded programming in the new fiscal year. We've also increased our indirect administrative rate to 15%. So you all may have heard, but the federal government is planning to increase their indirect rate from 10% to 15%. So anticipation of that federal policy change, we've increased our indirect administrative rate to 15% for all of our community-based partners and contracts with them. We've consistently heard from our partners that more robust administrative support is needed. So we're excited to implement this change and be responsive to that feedback from them. And then finally, Chair, you touched on the Tri-County Planning Body. We've recently, in Quarter Three, we've officially adopted the Landlord Recruitment and Retention Implementation Plan. So that work will get underway. And then as we look to the fall and later in the fiscal year, we'll continue to work with our Tri-County colleagues and Metro to roll out implementation plans for the health and housing integration work, the technical assistance and training and coordinated entry goals as well. And with that, I think I'll hand it over to Jill to talk about the Affordable-
Before we move over to the Affordable Housing Bond update, I just want to provide a couple of things. One is a shout-out to Governor Kotek for providing through her emergency, excuse me, her executive order, an additional $8 million so that we were able to purchase the 100 pods for implementation at our two Safe Rest Villages. Then the other is related to sustaining and strengthening the system we have built. You talked about the Move-In-Ready program. And on Saturday at the Beaverton Farmer's Market, I was talking to two of the Beaverton Police Officers and talking about the work that they do in helping various community members and needs. And they are not as familiar as they would like to be with how our system works. They encounter folks who need that one-time intervention in order to keep from losing their housing because of an unexpected car repair bill or something else along those lines. So I do have his card. I do need to pass it on to you as just one example of how we have really, through our police officers' boots on the ground, great resources who are interested in further connecting with the very programs that you have been putting in place. So thank you.
And before we move on to affordable housing, I sit on the Board of Community Action. And I want to thank you for the work that you've done in relationship to those administrative services and tightening up. I know that, I know that there were some difficulties in the past, and I really appreciate the focus that you've put on improving that. So thank you.
Any other Commissioners? Great. Thank you for letting us interrupt the flow.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you, Chair and Commissioners. I am Jill Chen. For the record, Assistant Director of Housing Authority of Washington County and Department of Housing Services. And I use she/her pronouns. And thank you for the opportunity to speak with you and give you an Affordable Housing Bond update. Before I start, I first want to just give a shout-out to my colleague, Andrew Crampton, and the development team. He and his team has done a tremendous job with the Metro Bonds. As a setting, sort of framework and setting up the housing need in Washington County, I just want to point out that 44% of the renter households in the county are cost-burdened, meaning their housing costs exceed 30% of their monthly income, while 20% are severely cost-burdened, paying more than half of their monthly income to housing. Situation is dire for those who do not own their houses. Not only are they not building equity, but with the median gross rent of $1,695 a month, low-income housing, low-income people do not have enough money to save. In fact, Washington County has the highest average rent in the state. Moreover, with such a low rental vacancy rate, it further drives up costs, making it difficult for people to find housing, which is a continuum. To meet the needs of our diverse community, we need to provide affordable housing on a spectrum. We are pleased, however, to report on the production targets accomplished with the Metro Housing Bonds. Washington County has 12 projects, which will produce an estimated 958 affordable housing units to house over 1,900 people. We are expected to exceed every single target set under the Metro Bonds and are particularly pleased with a high number of permanent supportive housing units, which are being used and integrated with our homeless services efforts. In total, the eight projects that are opened either fully leased or in the lease-up, 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 and are, we have two additional under construction and two more in pre-development. The eight that are currently opened consist of 508 total units, including 257 deeply affordable units and 292 family-sized units with two bedrooms or more. Just wanted to give a quick update on a couple of, a few projects. The first one is Cedar Rising. This is one of the projects that just started lease-up. It is, the project is a four-story, 82-unit development along TV Highway at 74th Avenue in unincorporated Aloha. We are so pleased to note that the project is on track to meet its equity and contracting goals of having at least 20% or more hard cost with certified minority or women-owned or emerging small business firms, such as Polaris Electric, which want a contract for over $2 million. And it is also providing opportunities for employment in our communities of color, with 64% of the workforce being performed by our communities of color. The project was able to reach a rapid three-month lease-up period by utilizing the ever-expansive community-based network of over 40 organizations providing referrals. And as an indication of the need, over 800 applications were received. Next slide, please. The next two slides are updates on projects in pre-development, the Woodland Hearth and Aloha 209. And these will be the last two projects in our Metro Bond portfolio. Woodland Hearth is a five-story building with 63 affordable units, ranging in size from studios to four bedrooms. It is being developed and will be owned by community partners for affordable housing, or SEPA. The project will have 24 very-low-income, 30% area median income units, of which 22 are permanent supportive housing. The remaining are regulated as 60% AMI or below. An update is the financial close. We're pleased. It's targeted for November of this year. And the project has received its private activity bond allocation, which means it will have its 4% low-income housing tax credits. Of note, we are pleased that the project received $1.5 million in funding from Senate Bill 1530 to support the required infrastructure improvements. And recently, Washington County submitted a request for Congressional Yearmark, which we hope to hear from our Congressional delegation in the fall. And the funds will be used to support the final program designs. Excellent, please. The last project we wanted to note is Aloha 209. This is one of the Metro site acquisition projects. It is a three-acre site along Southwest 209th Avenue and Alexander in Aloha. And Metro acquired this site in January 2024. And it is targeted to develop an estimated 86 units of affordable housing. The project is completing its feedback on program design facilitated by the Housing Authority, Unite Oregon, and Metro staff. In February 2024, the Housing Authority's Board authorized the initiation of pre-development expenses and costs. And in May, we expect OHCS to release their new funding process for project sponsors to submit projects for funding consideration. This project, along with the re-syndication of WoodSpring, will be two of our key priority projects for the Housing Authority. Last slide, please. Thanks, Molly. Just wanted to give you all a short feedback that we gave to the Metro Oversight Committee. Some observations about the Metro Bonds-funded projects so far is about our equity and contracting, even though it has added a bit more cost. And it supports our workforce development, as indicated in Cedar Rising. We are very supportive of those efforts. In addition, a couple more observations about the lease-up. Permanent supportive housing, we have noted, requires a longer lease-up period because of the higher needs of our community. And also, it has been critical to communicate and work with our community network to increase that speed of lease-up, but also to reach out to more of our community in need. We have found that with deeply affordable units, even those that are not referred through coordinated access or for permanent supportive housing, many of our projects require additional support services. And with that higher resident need, we have also seen higher operating costs. And with that feedback we provided to Metro, we're also pleased to take any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for this informative report. Commissioners, do you have any questions? I will say that on Supportive Housing Services, with the 85% of budget, I did misinterpret that as the goal for the whole fiscal year. So I was really glad you clarified that, since we got dinged for only reaching, what? 98 or 95% of budget last year? So exceed the goal! Keep going! Spend it all and then some! Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? Go ahead, Commissioner Willie.
First of all, this is always an impressive report and shows how much success and hard work you're doing. So congratulations on that. Would like to go back to Slide Number Seven, where we're talking about the supportive housing placements and rapid rehousing, where you indicated you're falling short of that. And so what's the plan of action to? And you said that you were going to work hard on getting that back up to your goals. So what's your plans for that?
So we have several things in the works. One, we, we've- One, we've been lagging behind for a little, for a little while now, so it's not really a surprise that we're where we are, where we've been making adjustments throughout the year. At this point, we're focusing in on increasing enrollments, doing more targeted case conferencing individually with each organization, so that we're, who is left on your unhoused list and what is preventing them from getting into housing? And we have set individual agency goals with each organization, so that collectively we'll achieve the system-level goal. We've also removed some of our own policy and process barriers that have been getting in the way of moving folks through our, through our system, increasing more graduation opportunities.
Yeah, and I think that's to be anticipated. I mean, we're still building this plane as we fly it, so, so yeah, we're going to run some of those. I just wanted to hear what your plan of action was to kind of bring that back up to your goals and how we're going to get there, because you're doing a great job.
Thank you, and I will just, since Chair Harrington had mentioned, the focus that we've had more on actively engaging with folks who have been unsheltered for quite some time through the executive orders, we are seeing a larger number of folks who have been, who are at a higher level of need in our, in our system than we had been seeing previously. And so just kind of adjusting our policies and practices as we, as we learn better how to serve population and individuals, like Russell, who we talked about earlier. Thank you.
I'd also like to add that I really appreciate Ms. Rogers, the team really pushing hard and really leaning in to the money-revenue opportunities, such as you mentioned with OHCS, WoodSpring, as well as the new site acquisition project. And I want to give a shout out to Andrew, Andrew Crampton of the team. Oh, you're even here! Thank you! You have really helped me be brave through the private activity bonds, through recapitalization, just explaining how it works, satisfying my need for understanding, being so patient with questions, and, and making sure I understand the due diligence that you do with the outside Bond Council and the, the capital consultants that we seek advice and advisement from. So job well done. Thank you. Well, thank you very much, team. Keep up the good work. You are making a positive difference, not only in individuals' lives, but in our community overall, and we are grateful for your service. Thank you. Thank you, team. Next, we have a couple of different public hearings today. So our Land Use and Transportation folks will be coming up to the table in order to give us a brief overview of what each of these opportunities are about, and then we'll go through the appropriate public hearings and next steps. So, welcome.
Good morning, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. For the record, I'm Tricia Garisco, Associate Planner, and with me is Teresa Cherniak, Principal Planner with Land Use and Transportation. And I'll be giving a brief presentation on proposed boundary change 24-01, which is request to annex one tax lot and right-of-way into the Clean Water Services District. The subject property is located in the city of, no, this is, this is the wrong one. This is the, yeah, we needed 001. Did I go too far? Yes. Thank you. That's great, thank you. Okay. For the record, I am Tricia Garisco, Associate Planner with Land Use and Transportation, and with me is Teresa Cherniak, Principal Planner. The subject properties are located, I'm sorry, the subject property is located in the city of Banks, within the UGB. The subject property is approximately 30 acres in size and is shown here in dark gray, west of Main Street and south of northwest Cedar Canyon Road. The lighter gray area shows the current extent of the Clean Water Services boundary in the vicinity. The proposal is a request from Max Bondur with David Weekly Holmes, and as previously mentioned, the request is to annex one tax lot and right-of-way into Clean Water Services in order to serve future development at the 30-acre site. This annexation request was initiated by a consent petition from the property owner. County staff has reviewed the request and found that it meets the criteria for boundary changes as outlined in the staff report. Staff recommends that the board conduct the public hearing, and at the conclusion of the hearing, adopt the resolution and order approving the annexation into Clean Water Services, with the approval becoming effective tomorrow, May 22nd. If there is any public testimony today, there is a brief statement I will need to read into the record.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions on this? All righty, well, with that, I'd like to open a public hearing. Clerk Moss.
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone come in the auditorium to sign up. Would any member in the auditorium wish to provide public comment on this public hearing? As you've heard the staff presentation, give us a moment to raise your hands, start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing? As you've heard the presentation from staff, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close today's public hearing and ask for a motion to adopt the resolution and order approving the annexation, with the approval becoming effective tomorrow, May 22nd, 2024, and to authorize the Chair to sign the resolution and order for Service District Annexation 24-001 LRP slash BC. So move. Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And next, we'll move on to 24-002.
Thank you. I will be giving a brief presentation on proposed boundary change 24-002, which is a request to annex 10 tax lots and right-of-way into Tuolleton Hills Park and Recreation District. The subject properties are located in the city of Beaverton. The properties total approximately 40 acres in size and are shown here in dark gray, west of southwest 175th Avenue and south of southwest Horse Tail Drive. The lighter gray area shows the current extent of the THPRD boundary in the vicinity. This proposal is a request by property owner TNHC Oregon LLC, and as previously mentioned, the request is to annex 10 tax lots and right-of-way totaling approximately 40 acres into the Tuolleton Hills Park and Recreation District in order to serve future development at the 40-acre site. This annexation request was initiated by a consent petition from, from the property owner. County staff has reviewed the request and found that it meets the criteria for boundary changes as outlined in the staff report. Staff recommends that the board conduct the public hearing, and at the conclusion of the hearing, adopt the resolution and order approving the annexation into THPRD, with the approval becoming effective tomorrow, May 22nd. If there is any public testimony today, there is a brief statement I will need to read into the record.
Thank you. So we've moved on from the city of Banks and a CWS annexation to now the city of Beaverton, Tuolleton Hills Park District. So two different districts, two different properties. So next, I would like to open the public hearing to consider this annexation. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to testify?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up or come in the auditorium. Would any member in the auditorium wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing? As you've heard the presentation from staff, raise your hand or start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online via Zoom wish to provide public comment for up to two minutes on this public hearing? As you've heard the staff presentation, give you just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll close today's public hearing and apologize if I blew out Commissioner Willie's left ear with, with all the gavel banging here. And I would ask for a motion to adopt the resolution and order approving the annexation, with the approval becoming effective May 22nd, 2024, and authorize the Chair to sign the resolution and order for Service District Annexation 24-002 LRP slash BC. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please raise your hand or say aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Are there any opposed? The motion passes unanimously five to zero. Thank you for following all the appropriate procedures. Next, we're going, going to move on to an action item, and this is to approve local agencies, a local agency certification program with the Oregon Department of Transportation, which will allow Washington County, through our Land Use and Transportation Organization, to deliver federally funded transportation projects. And with us, we have our awesome Director of Land Use and Transportation, Stephen Roberts, who has a large portfolio and is an amazing subject matter expert across the whole umbrella and does a terrific job meeting with constituents and employees alike.
Thank you, Chair. You're going to make me blush, but thank you for the kind words. I really appreciate that. So this is a project that's been underway for several years, actually, and it's not a small undertaking. And so this could have been something we would just put on the consent agenda and move it through very quickly, but we thought it was worth just taking a few minutes to let you know what we've been up to. This is a pretty, pretty big deal, and we're very excited about it. So I'll just run through a quick presentation before your action. So the action that we are requesting is for you to approve the Local Agency Certification Program Agreement, that's a mouthful, with ODOT, and it is about a 70-some-page document. It's a, it's a meaty document, but it does outline the general terms and conditions that we, as a county, will be expected to follow in order to deliver federally funded transportation projects on our own. So a little bit about what certification means. So our, our staff have been working with ODOT through this program for a couple of years now, and so this does allow us to directly deliver federal projects. Previously, we have had to rely on ODOT project staff to sort of act as an intermediary, if you will, between the county and Federal Highways Administration. We think that doing this was going to allow us shorter project delivery timelines for those federal-funded projects. We have been able to demonstrate that we can reduce the time to bring our consultants on board by more than half versus going through the traditional sort of ODOT process. We think that our design timelines, design timelines can also be reduced, because we think that we will have more direct control over managing those schedules and, and reviews. We also think that, obviously, those shorter project timelines could help us to reduce project costs and impacts, and so that's a big, big step forward for us. And then, as a side benefit, the county can also deliver federally funded projects as a project delivery agency for other entities, other agencies. I know a couple of our cities in Tuolleton Hills Park and Rec. District have expressed some interest in working with us in that regard, too. So what does the agreement say? Well, it basically says we're going to coordinate our project work with ODOT and FHWA. It outlines procedures for procurement of our consulting and construction contracting. Obviously, we will comply with federal laws and policies, establishes a number of reporting requirements that we'll need to meet. We do have to follow both the sort of federal and national, as well as our local design standards, and then has some certain insurance and indemnity type requirements. And then, as, this is a master agreement, and so as each individual project comes along, we will enter into a supplemental project agreement that has more specificity and details around each individual project. The agreement's been reviewed by our staff and by county council, and now needs your board's approval in order to move forward with the certification process. And just as an example, there are some projects that we're, actually, Council Creek Regional Trail, were already underway. That actually is functioning as a demonstration project of our ability to use the, the tools that we've been developing for the certification process to directly deliver that project, which is a RACE grant, $12.2 million in federal funds there. We also have the Council Creek Regional Trail Crossings Project, which helped us to make up the difference between our original RACE grant application amount and the amount that we were awarded. That's regional flexible funds, which is indirectly federal funding. And then we have a project on Cornell Road that we've been partnering with the city of Hillsborough on, between 17th and 21st Avenue. It's a safety project, and that is Arts or All Roads Transportation Safety Funding, which is administered via ODOT as well. And that is the presentation. I'm happy to try to answer any questions that you have and look forward to your action.
Well, thank you to you and your team for demonstrating that you have the track record to do this already, and then for, in addition to doing that, pursuing the full-fledged master agreement. Commissioners, do you have any other comments or questions?
The only comment, Stephen, thank you. I know that's a long project, took a lot of effort, and it's one of those things, it's not real sexy to the public when you're presenting, but it's a great deal of work, so, good job.
Yes, and I neglected to mention, I think we'll be the 13th or 14th agency in the state to, to achieve that certification, so.
Great. Well, do we have a motion to approve the Local Public Agency Certification Program Agreement with ODOT and authorize its execution upon completion of the county's contractor review process?
Move.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All righty, next on our agenda is the second public comment opportunity for today's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and testify for up to five minutes an individual. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to do so?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. I did not see anyone sign up in the auditorium. Any member, the public that joined us in the auditorium, would you like to provide comment for up to five minutes on any county-related topic? Give you a moment to raise your hand, start coming forward. Not seeing any in the room. Would any member online wish to provide public comment for up to five minutes on any county-related topic? Give us just a moment to utilize raise hand function. Not seeing any hands, Chair Harrington.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll move to board announcements. We have some changes to our upcoming meetings, because we were very efficient with our Full Budget Committee in approving the various Washington County budgets. So next Tuesday, May 28th, that is after the Monday Memorial Day holiday, we have a work session in the afternoon starting at 2:00, followed by a board meeting in the evening, 6:30 PM. And then we're into the month of June already, time for college and high school graduations and summers at our doorstep. Tuesday, June 4th, work session will start at 9:00. We'll pause that, go into board meeting at 10:00, and then reconvene the work session after that. On Monday, June 10th, we'll be having our monthly roundtable. Please do note the change of the week, and we'll start that at 9:00 AM, followed by Tuesday, June 11th, work session starting at 9:00, and that's an entire work session day. On Tuesday, June 18th, we'll have a work session starting at 9:00. We'll pause that, convene as the Housing Authority Board of Directors, starting at 10:00, and we'll be working to adopt the Housing Authority budget at that particular meeting. Then immediately following that, we will have, have the Board of Commissioners meeting, that's Tuesday, June 18th. Then on Tuesday, June 25th, we'll have our afternoon work session starting at 2:00 and our board meeting at 6:30 PM. And don't forget, we have another holiday, Juneteenth, on Wednesday, June 19th, and at, I believe, 6:00 PM on Thursday, June 20th, you can join us here in the Washington County Public you can join us here in the Washington County Public Services Building Auditorium for the annual State of the County address. Are there any other board announcements for today?
We'd just like to remind people that today is election day and to make sure you get your ballots in.
By 8:00 PM, it's too late to drop it in the mailbox if it's late in the day. So we do have ballot collection sites all over the county. You've probably seen the orange signs at your local libraries, but you can also drop it off at the Washington County election site right up until 8:00 PM, and that is just off of Alec Leck Road, which is just off of Cornell Road. All right. So we will, in a moment, have a, a motion. We want to have a motion to adjourn the regular business meeting of Tuesday, May 21st, 2024, and a motion to convene in executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660-2-F for the purposes of attorney-client privilege and submission in confidence. And please note that we will reconvene our work session at 1:00 PM in our regular work session room. All those in favor of adjourning the meeting and reconvening at executive session at 11:15, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Yeah, I saw yours. Thank you, everyone. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Bye-bye.